Our regular planning commission meeting is called to order. The time is six P M. Before we begin, commissioners, please put away cell phones. If you have personal business during the meeting, please move for a recess. If you are participating telephonically, please mute your phone unless you are speaking. Also, when speaking, please state your name for those streaming the meeting. As a reminder to attendees, this meeting is being streamed live. The camera is located in the back of the council chambers above the clock. Will the planning clerk please call the roll?
Thank you Chairman Seals. Commissioner Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Seals?
Here.
Commissioner Langel?
Here.
Commissioner DeYoung?
Present.
Commissioner Stafford?
Present.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Stafford, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item of business is approval of the agenda. Before changes are discussed, are there conflicts of interest to declare? If the commission would like to discuss anything under the consent agenda such as the minutes, they need to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under new business at this time. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing no changes to the agenda, the agenda will stand as presented unless objection is raised. Next on the agenda are reports. Do we have a report from Deputy Administrator Nygaard?
Thank you Chairman. Couple items for economic development. We had our economic development summit and there were a hundred and seven people that attended, which was almost double what we had last year. And then we had fifty-five attendees who took the tour. We took them to the MACOM dispatch center, to the pump station, to the sewer plant, up to ski talk, and then over to government peak. And so it was very well attended and we are looking forward and starting to plan the fall summit as well. Another thing to note is Title sixteen. There will be a special meeting for the city council on the twenty-first of May. It's really important that you guys attend that if you can, from six to nine here in the chambers. Planning right now is at a peak level. We've got about a hundred and twenty-six permits in the queue that we're trying to get through and two C U Ps that are going to be coming forward in the next sixty days. But more importantly, we want to really thank the team in planning, Julia and Mary, for making this happen tonight. They ordered an excellent pizza and got this all to you on time. So thank you. And then also thank you Elise with respect for ensuring that the application was tight and ready to go. We couldn't do it without everybody's hundred per hundred and fifty percent effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, do we have a report from the acting city planner Nygaard?
Not at this time.
Do we have a report from the city attorney?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the public participation. We are now at persons to be heard. A time for members of the public to share their views with the planning commission. This is not a question or an answer period or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the commission or administration. Anyone wishing to step forward may do so at this time. With no one wishing to speak, the next item of business is the consent agenda. Would the city planner please read the items for approval under the consent agenda into the record?
Thank you Chairman. I'm going to refer to the planning clerk to read that into the record.
There are no minutes to approve this meeting. Thank you.
We don't have a consent agenda tonight. We need to approve the agenda. That would be Chair's committee.
Chairman, we just need to read into the record the minutes and the preceding minutes for the April eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Chairman, we'll need to, we'll need to retrieve those minutes and then get those to you after the meeting.
Thank you. We are now at new business. Will the city planner please read the agenda item under new business?
Thank you Chairman. We are very excited about this development that's happening in our city. It's, it's been the talk of the town here for a few years. This is a conditional use permit number twenty-five oh three, resolution serial number twenty-five oh three. And the applicant is Timothy Alley with the Bode Company. The owner is Sun Mountain Development Group LLC. Conditional use approval for an amendment to the previously approved conditional permits under CU eighteen oh one, CU nineteen oh one, CU nineteen oh two, CU twenty twenty-one, CU twenty oh two, CU twenty-one oh one, and CU twenty-four oh one for the shops at Sun Mountain. The amendment proposes relocation of Home Two Suites formerly condo unit H to proposed condo unit I. Change approved height of structure from fifty-four feet to sixty feet one inches. Change approval wall mount at sign height from forty-eight feet to fifty-six at the development. The lot area is two point three nine two acres. The location is two-two-four-two East Tyson's Trail, Wasilla, Alaska, nine-nine-six-five-four. And the shops at Sun Mountain Phase One condo, proposed unit one. The zoning is commercial and we do recommend approval of this application. In our review of the application, there were a couple of things noted that we put as conditions of approval. One of them, and you'll see on page nine, is a, is a very comprehensive list of things that we recommend as conditions of approval. One is the development of the site must substantially comply with the site plan and plan submittal attached as exhibit B in resolution serial number twenty-five oh three. Except as indicated in these conditions of approval or otherwise noted, any changes of the plans must be submitted to the city planner for review. And minor revisions may be approved by the city planner and all other chan- changes must be approved as an amendment to the C U P. The second is the applicant must obtain a letter from Central Matsui Fire Department, Fire Marshal for certificate of approval indicating the development conforms to the current CMS F D adopted building and fire codes. Third, the applicant shall install insulation over the septic tanks and lines due to the location in an asphalt driving lane area. Four, the applicant shall have successful application approval of the stormwater management system for the new development from the City of Wasilla Department of Public Works. The applicant shall have successful application approval of all required utility permits. And two last requirements, the applicant shall widen the retention pond access routes to thirty feet to allow for dumping and stockpiling of snow. And landscaping bond is submitted prior to any vertical construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on the conditional use permit twenty-five dash oh three?
Mr. Chairman, if I may real quick, Michael Schwartz from Burton.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to raise just a, what I think should be somewhat of a minor issue procedure. Well, the board certainly has the power to modify the conditional use permit to increase the height of the building, or the permission, excuse me. A variance was previously granted for the height of the sign. And I didn't see anything in the submission package from the applicant addressing criteria for a variance. And just to be fair to the applicant, I think that should be part of the submission or part of, part of the record, just for complete record. At the end of the day, the, the commission is approving party, whether it's for a conditional use permit amendment or a, a new variance or an amendment to a variance. So I, I think the, the commission has the power to do everything tonight. But I just wanted to make a complete record on that subject.
Thank you. Please write your name and contact information on the signup sheet. When you're finished, please state your name for the record. You will have five minutes to speak.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the planning commission. Appreciate your time for tonight. Hopefully this is relatively harmless. We had already approved or received approval of our conditionally used permit for Home Two Suites at the shops in Sun Mountain. This, this amendment is to change the location on the site as well as adjust for certain design thing. Architectural design elements that were, have been modified from the original application as they progress through design. So the design's gotten a lot further forward. They're a lot closer to construction at this point. And so there's been some adjustments to the, the structure as, and that is reflected in, in the reason for our amendments that we're requesting here. So as, as discussed or mentioned, we are looking at amending three, three portions of, of the approved conditional use permit for shops on the mountain. The first is the site plan change. We are moving Home Two Suites. It was originally planned for condo unit H, which is kind of more towards the northwest portion of the development. We're moving it east to the northeastern portion of the property. That is due mostly in part to the hotel being a, a destination that people are going to search for, you know, pull up on maps. They know they're going there. It's not really a generator of new trips. They're not, you know, people aren't driving by and like, oh, I want to go to Home Two Suites. You know, they're, they're, they already got a reservation. They're looking it up in maps and they're trying to find it. So we, we're relocating to a more secluded area on the site with the idea that people are going to be mapping it to get to it. With that in mind, that, you know, it is in a little bit more secluded. So that goes into a little bit of the sign height request that we have here. But also the, the change in approved height is due to the architectural design. As it's moved forward, they needed a little bit more room between floors, about two feet. And so that increases the height of the building from the originally approved fifty-four feet to now sixty foot one inch. And then with that change in height is the change in the sign height, which is roughly in the same location on the, on the building. But because the building's getting higher, we're also raising the sign up, sign up as well. So that's, that's the reason for the, that increase in height. Again, the, the, moving the Home Two Suites from condo unit H over to condo unit I then allows the developer to have, to, to set aside those areas that are a little bit more visible from the park's highway for, for more retail or, or development that is more reliant on people driving by and seeing, hey, there's that over there. I can pull in here. There's some junior box stores that are looking at getting in there. Nothing concrete yet, but again, it's, it's mainly just to shift the visibility to, so that way just planning out the site development a little bit better for, for how people are going to be accessing it and what they're going to be searching for and how, you know, how those things come about. So because we're moving it back into that corner and because of the sign, sorry, excuse me, increase in building height, the sign height is increasing. And as the attorney had mentioned, we had actually put in an application for a new variance. I didn't think that was necessarily called for. And working through planning department, I think that, that was a little bit agreed upon there that we, we should be able to get this kind of approved as one application. The sign height is being increased for the same reasons that we asked the increase before. And I have the previously approved variance and, and the findings there. So there's five conditions for a variance and how they're approved. And I'll just reiterate those. It's again, I, I might need a little bit more time. I apologize. But hopefully this will help kind of wrap it all together. The first condition is that the variance is not based on, does not apply generally to properties in the district. This criteria is meant because there are three significant conditions that apply to this subject property that are not generally to other in the commercial lots of the area. First is we have a significant setback due to the size of the property, significant setback from the park's highway and, and the frontage road. And we're significantly higher in elevation on the lot. The subject project property is a, is a large parcel setback from Park, Parks Highway, approximately a hundred fifty feet, five feet to two hundred sixty-two feet due to the front, the frontage road. Other commercial properties along the park, along the parks are setback approximately seventy-nine to seventy, fifty-nine to seventy-six feet from the pavement. The second, so the parcel is at a significantly higher elevation than the park's highway and other commercial lots are approximately right around the area of about ten feet higher. The difference in elevation coupled with the significant setback makes it hard to see from the, from the park's highway. So we're just asking for that additional sign height. It'll look good on the, on the building facade. It's not, we're not raising it way up above, putting a big billboard on top of the building. It's on the side of the wall below the parapet on the roof. So it is still incorporated into the building design. And, so, so the visibility of the hotel signage from this development, if constructed consistent with, with code, which is thirty-foot maximum height, the sign's going to end up lying right in the middle of some floors with blocking windows, which are needed for egress, for fires and that kind of thing. The third, third issue is that at the requested height, for a four-story hotel, I mean, yeah, again, trying not to block windows. And this will be one of the tallest buildings in the city at, when it's constructed. Variance criteria number two is such, such conditions arise out of natural features inherent in the property such as shape or topocra- topographical conditions of the property or because of unusual physical surroundings or such conditions arise out of surrounding development or conditions. So this is meant because many of the conditions applicable to this property are caused by the setback from the park's highway. We have the park's highway plus Sun Mountain Road and then our development. So it's, it's a little bit further setback from the park's highway. And with a, it, as you drive by, it's, it's significantly higher, a bit higher in elevation as well. Number three, because of such conditions, the strict application to the property of the requirements of this chapter will result in undue substantial hardship to the owner for the property such that no reasonable use of the property could be made. Without the variance, we would be, the applicant, the development would be limited to a thirty-foot high wall signs and that would not provide visibility from, and readability from the park's highway for the hotel signage. I will also add that this new location is behind Planet Fitness from the highway, which is also a very large structure. So we're just trying to, again, increase visibility. Number four, the special conditions that require the variance are not caused by the person seeking the variance, a predecessor, an interest, or agent of either. We are not doing this specifically out of financial hardship or inconvenience. This is actually made, being the site that it is, allows us to have better visibility for more retail oriented business. And in, in general, it should help out the city and the tax base, the property, you know, with sales tax base coming into the city, providing better, more visible property for development for retail uses, which is a higher, higher tax base than, than the hotel will be. And then number five, the variance is not sought solely to relieve pecuniary hardship or inconvenience. Again, the variance, we're, we're trying to utilize, utilize the site as best we can, picking locations for the development on the site that fits their uses. And going back to, you know, people can map. They have an idea, they, they know they've got a reservation in a hotel. They're going to map the location of the hotel versus a retail facility, which is trying to pull people off of, of the road too. The variance is not sought, again, solely for financial hardship or inconvenience. It's requested just to allow additional visibility from the road to, to help the hotels setting in a, in a more visibly not convenient location. So, and those were the five criteria that we would be meet, we would have to meet. And it is applicable from the original variance to this amendment. And with that, I think I, I'm open to any questions that you guys have.
We'll, we'll bring you back up.
Okay.
To your comments, thank you.
Yep.
Is the owner here tonight?
Rick Marco is here on behalf of Affinity Hospitality. He's the development or the construction hotel manager for construction and the project part of it.
Would the owner's representative like to speak on conditional use permit twenty-five oh three? Please write your name and contact information on the signup sheet. When you are finished, please state your name for the record. You will have five minutes, give or take, to speak.
Yes, my name is Rick Marco. I'm with Affinity Hosp- is this turned on? Can you hear me okay?
Push the button.
Oh.
There you go.
Thank you. My name is Rick Marco. I'm with Affinity Hospitality. We are hotel developer operators that have been doing projects like Home Two Suites for forty-five years. We've done several hundred hotels. Did our first Home Two Suites in Anchorage on C Street. It was a huge success. People really like it. We have gone from that to a second hotel in Anchorage that is currently under construction in Marriott Courtyard. And came up to the valley about ten years ago and liked it a lot and ended up acquiring the Best Western at Lake Lucille and renovated the restaurant called The Chop House at Lake Lucille now. So my wife and I bought a home in Wasilla. We're residents. We enjoy being in the community and we are extremely pleased that we can add a new hotel, a Hilton Home Two Suites, to the community. We, we, we are confident that it will be well received. Just to give you an idea of our hotel management group, at Home Two Anchorage, we opened it within two months. It climbed the ranks on TripAdvisor to the number one hotel out of then eighty hotels in Anchorage, Alaska. It was the first hotel in Anchorage to ever maintain that number one position for a year uninterrupted. We held that property for over two years and then sold it. It stayed number one. It's, Home Two is, is a brand that guests love and we are confident that it will do very well here in the valley. It's, it's, it's what's called a mid-scale extended stay hotel. It does have a pool and spa, so it'll be a great spot for families with, with kids to enjoy. It, it does not have a restaurant, does not have a bar. It's more of a limited service hotel. It offers a comp breakfast in the morning, no, no dinner, no, no lunch. So it, all of the rooms have kitchens. It's, again, extended stays. So the average length of stay is, is, I think, right now running about four nights. But we have guests that stay, you know, for much longer. So it's, you know, it's, it's, it's in the mid-tier extended stay category. It's a Hilton brand. When we did Anchorage, we were one of the first fifty there and they now have about five hundred Home Twos open. It's been one of the strongest, most popular brands of all times. We're absolutely confident it will do well in Wasilla and we're pleased to be part of the community. Do you have any, any questions about?
We could probably bring you up later, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
If we have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. The public comments portion of the public hearing is now open for conditional use permit twenty-five oh three. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Anyone wishing to step forward may do so at this time. With no one wishing to speak, the public comment portion of the public hearing is closed. Does the applicant have anything else to address?
I do not, but I'm happy to receive any questions that you may have, that the commission may have.
Well, if you want to wait right there a minute. Now, may I have a motion to either approve or deny conditional use permit twenty-five oh three, resolution serial number twenty-five oh three?
Can we move to committee?
We'll have discussion in a minute.
Yeah, you have to have the motion to put the, the motion on the floor and then you have discussion.
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Commissioner?
DeYoung.
DeYoung and seconded by Commissioner Stafford to approve conditional use permit twenty-five oh three, resolution serial number twenty-five oh three. Is there any discussion by the commission?
Through the chair to the planner? Just a couple of questions. The first one is a two-part. I noticed in this application, and I was not on the commission during the previous one, so I'm playing catch-up. But I noticed in this one, just like the last one, we are now using the term shared parking. Is the planning department on this large development? Tracking how many required spaces have been moved from required to shared?
We have not been tracking per se, but we have went back in history and collectively looked at the numbers. So each, when they make these amendments, we just ensure that the original number and the addition or subtraction is still. and the addition or subtraction is still going to be within that range. So we don't get right down to the exact number, but we do have a range that we confirm. And then we have our contract planner just confirm that as well.
Okay. And then the second part of that, are the businesses involved in the sharing, is there written agreements or are they aware that they are now sharing their parking spots?
Commissioner Langel, I will, I would like to defer that question to the developer because the initial CUP was approved as one development and they have their individual agreements. Even though we have a copy, I would prefer that they speak on behalf of that.
The development as a whole has an agreement with all condo lot owners or tenants to share parking across the site. So we are, yeah. And if you look at the overall site plan that was prepared for the, the application, there is a parking summary on there and currently we are about six, six spaces short of what were required by code, just generally from the uses on the site versus what we have shown on there. Out of, and that's four hundred forty-eight is what would be required, not looking at overlapping uses. And when I say that, I'm saying like, you have, you know, uses that are, are retail and they're only open like, let's say nine to five or something like that. But then you also have uses like restaurants or, or, or Home Two Suites. That'll be more nighttime, you know, people coming into park. So there's the opportunity for a lot of shared parking by the uses that are, that are on there. Some, some uses are going to be a little bit more heavy during normal business hours. Some are going to be a little bit more heavy at nighttime or, or morning time hours. And so that, that is part of, you know, that shared parking agreement is, is to, yeah, to utilize that as best we can without providing, I suppose, you know, just a sea of parking that never gets utilized. And I'll, I'll mention Anchorage, they got rid of their actual parking count requirement and put that on developments, developers to say, you guys figure out how much parking you guys need so we don't have huge parking lots that are just open. And one of the perfect examples of that is, is Tocotnew. You have certain uses like Target that utilize a lot of parking, but then you have huge open, not used parking areas outside of that. So, you know, trying, trying to also keep them, you know, utilize a little bit of that idea, trying to share the parking across the site.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Again, new to this development, the planner or you or someone, can you explain the septic requirement and why it's here if you're on city sewer? Just so I have an understanding.
Do you want to?
Yeah, I'll have the advocate explain that.
So, so the city utilizes a step system, which is a septic tank effluent pump system. So the city treatment system uses, utilizes, or it receives the effluent, just liquid, and then onsite at every, you know, in just about any building out here, you have a separate tank to collect the solids. So this site, the, the Home Two Suites will actually have two septic tanks. Hey, Rick, is that still in the design to have two septic tanks?
Yes, it is.
So we'll have two septic tanks, about six thousand gallons, so that they can be pumped with one truck individually. That collects the solids and then the effluent gets pumped off, which is just liquid. You know, whatever liquid's coming off the top of that gets pumped for the city to treat in their ways, in your waves water treatment plant.
So there are two septic?
There, there will be two septic tanks, yeah. Due to the size of the building, we, we added, rather than having one huge one, we made two smaller ones so that they're easier to maintain.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion by the commission?
I do have a question and this may be more for the developer. But being an extended stay, does it ever have a minimum night stays? Like, I've seen them where it's like a two-night minimum. Is that in the plans for this?
No, there's no minimum.
Okay.
You know, guests can stay a single night or stay six months if they want.
Okay, thank you.
No minimum requirement.
I'll, I'll reiterate that for the microphone. No, no minimum one night, one night stay is fine. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? With no further discussion, will the city planner please call for a roll call vote to approve conditional use permit twenty-five oh three? Resolution serial number twenty-five oh three. I guess that would be the planning clerk, excuse me, pardon me. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Stafford?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner DeYoung?
Yes.
Commissioner Langel?
Yes.
Well, thank you, everyone. There is no unfinished business, so we move directly to communications. We are now at communications. Are there any comments on the communication items as presented? Permit information, information log, and Matt Nuskasus at New Borough Planning Commission Agenda.
Commissioner Seals, would you mind having the planning clerk read the specific items under each of those? And then just state for the record that the, the vote was unanimous, all in favor of.
Stand by.
This is the planning clerk. By unanimous vote, the conditional use permit number twenty-five oh three and resolution numbers twenty-five oh three is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to move back to comments on the, so your motion has been approved. Thank you very much. So do we have any comments on the permit log? Communications log?
Chairman Seals, the planning clerk can just go ahead and, and for the record, two point one, permit information, permits and licenses issued April second, twenty twenty-five to March sixth, twenty twenty-five. Ten point two, the enforcement log are the code violations, April second, twenty twenty-five to May sixth, twenty twenty-five. And ten point three is the Matt Nuskasus at New Borough Planning Commission Agendas for April twenty twenty-five, May twenty twenty-five, and June twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Is there any comments by the commission? We are now at audience comments, a time for members of the public to share their views with the commission. This is not a question and answer period or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the council or administration. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission? If no one is present, or no comments, we move. If no one wishes to speak, we now move on to comments. Acting City Planner Nygaard, do you have any comments this evening?
Nope, I just have a scorecard. So that takes us up to about four hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of new construction. That will happen here in the next twelve months and about fourteen hundred construction jobs, five hundred and seventy-two full and part-time jobs. So thank you very much.
It's a win-win for the city. Commissioner Brown, do you have any comments this evening?
No, I don't have any comments. Sorry, I couldn't be there due to the emergency. But if you could give me a call after you finish visiting the city hall.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Landgill, do you have any comments?
No.
Commissioner DeYoung, do you have any comments?
I just want to say I'm excited. It's about time we got a decent hotel.
Commissioner Stafford, do you have any comments?
It's exciting to see the number of permits being issued. I am concerned without having a city planner, just the workload on the planning department. And hopefully we can find a new city planner. I know the last search was over a year. So that's, that's, that'd be my only concern. I'm just excited to see the new hotel coming. It's great to see two city council members here with us tonight. We always appreciate you guys coming out. We view our work as, as in partnership with your work. So, and I think that's it for me.
Thank you. As chair, I have comments tonight. I'm extremely proud of the staff that we have in the planning department for stepping up and for our city administrator taking on another role for the city. I believe that this is in the best interest of the city and I think planning should probably merge with public works. I think it would behoove both departments to be involved in the planning of the city because without infrastructure, we can make all the plans in the world that we want, but if we don't have the infrastructure to support it, we don't have a viable future for all this expansion. So. Kudos to the planning department for stepping up here and that's all I have. Thank you, everyone. With no further business at hand, I'm adjourning this meeting unless an objection is raised.
We're all looking up.
We're looking at the speaker, Simon.
Not tonight.
Hearing no objection, the meeting is adjourned at six forty-three P M.